Call the meeting to order, roll call the aldermen.
Heisler.
Here.
Concella.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Anderson.
Oh.
Regowitz.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Silske.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Seibert.
Here.
Martinson.
Here.
Elmore.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Musgrove.
Here.
Arlen.
Here.
Alderman Anderson is excused. Roll call department heads.
Please Chief Clay. Fire Chief Langston.
Here.
Mike Flynn.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Amy Matrick.
Here.
Jim Gregawitz.
Here.
Jim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Spearman.
Here.
Emily Foltz.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer.
Here.
Bob Sabal.
Here.
Chief Clay will be here in just a minute. He's got an incident on the way to the meeting. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, if you please stand and join me in the presence of...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
This time, I will open public participation. If anyone would like to address the council this evening, please step up to the microphone, give your name and address, and try to keep your comments to two to three minutes. Anyone this evening? Yes, ma'am. Yes.
My name is Sharon Strasburg. I live at 301 Sherman Street in Bellevue, Illinois. I'd like to begin by thanking the Organs and Legal Review Committee for recommending that the city hold a public hearing regarding the issue of gambling. This is an issue that needs to be communicated to the people and voted on by the people. I'd also like to thank the Bellevue News Democrat for reporting this very important issue on the front page of the Sunday paper, calling attention to this issue and for calling it what it is: video gambling. The state of Illinois prefers to have us believe that the Video Gaming Act legalized an innocent form of entertainment when, in fact, it is gambling in its most addictive form. This act legalizes slot machines in our bars and in our restaurants where families and children die. I urge all residents to read the facts concerning video gambling and understand the severe consequences it brings to a community. The social ills it brings are called the ABCs of gambling: addiction, bankruptcy, and crime. We need to consider the impact on our businesses, our schools, our churches, and other organizations. While I understand that cities need income and revenue in order to pay bills, consider these facts: the cost of gambling outweighs the benefits by a factor of three to one. Gambling fails the cost-benefit test and taxpayers lose. If gambling were good for the economy, we'd be a rich state from our state lottery and our casinos. Instead, our state is in severe financial dilemma. State revenues derived from gambling are fundamentally flawed in that these revenues come from the pockets of people who lose at the game and prey on the weaknesses of its poorest citizens, the vast majority of which cannot afford to lose more money. While the state tries to allure us with easy revenue for the sole purpose of helping to solve their fiscal problems, they fail to tell you the other side. Gambling promotes citizen exploitation through gambling addictions. The gambling industry vigorously targets the poor, less educated, and the senior populations, selling the false hope that gambling has taken out of poverty. And most important to our community, gambling corrupts the pillars of character on which a community is built: honesty, integrity, kindness, courage, self-control, self-discipline, and responsibility. Many of these that we see in the charts hanging inside our city buildings and in our schools and in our businesses. How can a community that continuously prides itself on being an all-American city, a community offering fine culture, rich history, and tradition for its residents, a city that continuously touts itself as being a community of character, consider giving all of that up for money? We've heard that there are some 77 businesses that pour and serve alcohol in Bellevue that stand to gain from video gambling in the city. Keep in mind that quite a few of those businesses are concentrated downtown. By state law, only businesses with liquor licenses that pour and serve liquor... Okay. I'll stop at that, but I would like to leave this note: Would we want to be known as an economically depressed town with a casino instead of Bellevue, a community with character? Please let the people vote on this important issue. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Rick Brown, 632 South Pennsylvania, Bellevue, Illinois. Do you know what she just said? Double dare. I'm up here because I've been telling this council, the mayor, and the attorneys up here for years that writing tickets to people for having guests was against the law and unconstitutional. I've got my hands here a memo that was just sent out. I don't know if any of you aldermen got it yet, but it's to all sworn personnel from Lieutenant James Barker, occupancy permit enforcement. Recently, Associate Judge Julia Cade Katz did not move in favor of the city of Bellevue with regard to non-traffic citations issued for Bellevue ordinance 33-2-1A occupancy permit, specifically when the complaint addresses a number and names of occupants living in a dwelling. Judge Katz has expressed that the current ordinance is deficient and that the ordinance requires only the occupancy permit be issued before occupants are in use of a dwelling. Because of this, effective immediately, officers are only to issue non-traffic complaints in situations where an occupancy permit has not been issued. Do not issue non-traffic complaints based on the fact that person or persons are living in a dwelling and not listed on the occupancy permit. How many thousands of tickets has this city written? Now, this is one of a couple of... Michael, a couple of things that the two brain-dead attorneys that used to run this city, Mark Kern and Bob Spray, came up with. They were unconstitutional from the beginning, and they're unconstitutional now. You don't give tickets to people for having company, and that's exactly what it did. People got tickets for having their grandchildren over. This is one of the things that runs people out of town, and this one's only going to cost the city a few hundred thousand dollars. The real moneymaker, the real one that's coming, the choo-choo train that's headed for this city all, is when the retroactive rezonings hit. When that hits, this city has screwed people out of tens, if not hundreds, of millions of dollars illegally. This city won't survive that, and I'm telling you now, you aldermen need to look and see what these guys up here, you know, with Kern, with Spray, and now Eckert, some of the crap that they're giving you to vote on that takes away the rights of people. We have a constitution in this country and state, and that comes first.
Your turn, Mr. ...
Thank you.
Well, we'll discuss this, I mean, yes, sir.
I'm from 701 Centerville. Two weeks ago, I questioned the ADA compliance with the sidewalks, and you said you'd get an update for me.
I think you got the update right, Michael, from Mr. Gregawitz. You talked to him?
No.
No, I did not talk to him.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was not the impression you had.
No.
The update's very simple. In checking, we... The owner of the building was unavailable at the time of the fourth quarter square. Three ADA-approved choices that the owner of the building is deciding on which of the three designs they like to go with, so that we didn't have a trip-and-fall situation, we didn't have water get into the building like we did in two other instances when we did the sidewalks and had some potential liability. We filled it in, put it back as it was. The designs have been passed on in the building order. A choice will be made, and it will be corrected before the project is complete.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
One other option. The video gaming that was done, we had a ordinance meeting. There were a couple of gentlemen here who, I recall from my memory, said that they were authorized terminal operators. I could find no record of them with the state as having authorized. If we do have meetings and somebody comes up and says that they're authorized terminal operator, could they provide proof to us?
We'll ask them for that, but that was what they indicated that night, so we'll...
Yeah. Mrs. Fields... Anything they say is just what they say. There's, like I said, no record of them with the gaming network. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, in the back of the room. You'll be next.
Cindy Anderson, 74. Mayor Eckert, you say you're not a gambler. Yes, you are. You're gambling with people's lives. You have reintroduced gambling to this community and... Implement of destruction financially for these families. The last gaming empire that was here was responsible for my daughter's death. How are you going to keep the implement, the element, out of our community when you can't even keep underage drinkers out of the bars? You say tough restrictions and fines. However, the chairman of the Illinois Gaming Board states, "There is no amount of regulation that can prohibit illegal activity, even with thorough investigation of the company and background." Has anyone even asked our police department about this? The state doesn't know who's going to enforce this bill. Labor Commissioner and local police, who? And here we are. We're going to vote on this. You don't buy a car or a house without knowing all the facts. By the way, we, the people, want to know who are making you guys vote on this. This bill is so full of loopholes, they had to attach a trailer bill along with this. How do you plan to protect the people?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, next lady.
Pat Wade, 1957 Hawksville Drive in Bellevue. You'll be hearing a motion tonight for the city to take on the lighting consent of the church street subdivision, and I just wanted to, at the moment, to thank the Streets Department and the Finance Committee for listening to our concerns and getting it to this point, and we appreciate your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Sykesky. I live at 1933 Hawksville Drive in Bellevue, Illinois, and we're asking the council to approve payment of the street lights in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? During that, we'll close public participation. I would like to correct a mistake. Yes, Mr. Brown, there was a memo set out that was corrected, I believe, a day later. Is Captain Moody? I don't know that you were... You certainly did write and correct the memo, but did you see the...
I think it was the same day.
Same day?
Yeah.
There was some misinformation. The officer was not in the courtroom with Mr. Flynn when they...
Okay, a little miscommunication.
The... Mr. Flynn, do you want to explain the case? It was not...
The... That memo that was read by Mr. Brown does not accurately state the ruling of the court. It does not accurately state what the judge said in the courtroom, and it really does not accurately state anything in reference to this case. The fact of the matter is, the city lost this case based upon peculiar facts that were related simply to this case. There is no far-reaching conclusion to be reached from this particular ruling, and when I learned of that memo, I immediately contacted the police department to notify them of that, and I have no idea, but frankly, it's still unclear to me as to what the police department's source of information was that was not my office. So that memo has been rescinded and is no longer in effect, and violations of the city's occupancy code will continue to be written.
Could you call us either the name of the case or the number associated with it? Can we pick that ourselves?
It's... It's Lee Yuris River. It is the defendant. I don't remember the number of the case.
Will we be getting any information on it, or is this...
Well, there's really no information. The missent memo has been corrected. Officers know that it was not. There was information from the police department that was circulated to the chief that this was a ruling and the officer who circulated that was not even in the courtroom, and no one spoke to Mr. Flynn, who was in the courtroom. So it was totally... Your son was in the courtroom, I'm sorry, our assistant. But there was... It was a communication error, and it was corrected, and so I didn't really... We didn't really attempt to go out and advertise this whole thing because it was wrong.
May I ask, can we get the correct information since we've heard bits and pieces now, so we're not wondering what...
What do you want, the corrected memo that was sent out?
Yes, please.
Captain Moody?
The actual memo went out to stop police officers until we found out exactly what the deal was. That was it. Out of house. I have no idea how it got out of house. Everything was in-house until we actually found out what was the actual case about and if, in fact, we did need to change something. So it wasn't that we was doing anything wrong, it was just the fact that we wanted to do the right thing, period.
So the memo was changed and...
The same day.
Obviously, you got ahold of a memo that was quickly changed and you only got...
Are you going to be continuing to write tickets to people for the crime of visiting somebody and not listed on the occupancy permit? Is that what you're going to keep doing then? The officers will execute the ordinance as it's written.
So... Okay, we're not into discussion, you and I, here right now. I'm simply correcting a statement you made that there was a subsequent, rescinded memo the same day, and I don't... You stated some things here stating that this council and the city police department took misappropriate action, and I would clarify...
Tell me about the police department.
Well, the memo came from the police department. It didn't come from the mayor's office.
It went to the mayor's office, I know that.
And that's why it was immediately called and corrected, because I immediately called the city attorney.
Look, guys, you can't arrest people.
Mr. Brown, you had your couple minutes to say. I explained the fact that your statement was inadequate, wasn't correct, and we're moving on. Okay. At this time, we have a positive part of the meeting. We have a group of people here from the Kansas Neighborhood Watch who have a presentation to the fire chief, Chief Langston. If you'd come forward, please, and would the group of people here from the Kansas Neighborhood Watch please come forward and make your presentation to Chief Clay, because it's nice.
Langston.
Sorry, Chief Clay. Chief Clay is just on the line. It's coming through. Chief Langston, I pointed him to, I know where he is. Ladies, introduce yourself.
My name is Jerry Exler. I live at 17 Jenny C Street in Bellevue.
I didn't get her. I live at 1609 C Street, Bellevue.
Chief Langston, I'd like to present this picture of Chewie to you, to our department and for his handler, Engineer Garland, and I just want to give thanks to the fire department for all that you've done. We... When we had our annual picnic, Chewie and his handler came to the picnic, and they gave a demonstration which was really wonderful because he was sniffing on all this flammable liquid, and he gave us a very good, remarkable demonstration on how our dogs does work. We just really thank the fire department.
Thank you. It is a remarkable photo. It's really neat. You're correct. It's amazing what Chewie can accomplish and what he's done in so many cases already of identifying flammables in cases that we've now prosecuted or attempting to prosecute as arson. So it is... It's been a great addition to the fire department, to the city. Thank you for recognizing Chewie and his handler, Joe Garland, and I know the chief will put it up in the firehouse because they have no pictures on the wall of Chewie until now, so thank you. At this time, I would ask for a motion to appoint a committee that I needed to appoint to begin steering committee of the 200th anniversary and celebration of the city of Bellevue, which is in 2014. We're about 18 months away, and there is a lot of work. I did some research on the 175th. The committee at that time was about 18 to 20 people. I think we're right about 25, basically, down here. I ask for a motion to approve committee as follows: Johnny Anthony, Becca Boyer, David Braswell, Bob Brunkow, Bill Demestry, Mark and Rita Eckert, Mike Eckert, Patty Gregory, Teresa Hessel, Ken and Patty Heiss, Mike and Polly Hornacek, Mark and Aaron Kern, Joe Lanis, Mark and Sarah Langston, Jack Lashine, Bill Light, Molly McKenzie, Jennifer Gaines-Meyer, Mary Adcliffe, Donna Melissa Rockwell, and Roger Schleter. Do I hear a motion?
Somebody.
Motion by Alderman Meyer?
Second.
Second by Alderman Seibert. Any discussion?
I do have a question. I am a little concerned that 25 seems kind of cumbersome. Are you anticipating that the break into subcommittees that you...
Yes, ma'am. There's a lot of different things that I anticipate will be done as in the past, and there'll be more people than that needed. But when you potentially have a parade in a city store and a festival possibly, or a history book you put together and a host of things, you will need an adequate number of people. Bill Demestry did ask me to say that he's concerned about how much, because of his seniority, he was a little concerned that he could make all the meetings, but I told him we wanted him on there for his consultation, and he graciously accepted. Bob Brunkow also wanted me to clarify that he's got some projects going on for the better part of this year, but would be glad to be a consultant, and he has a lot of history knowledge, I know. So those two did clarify that they, right off the bat, may have limited time. But there's a lot of different committees we anticipate and a lot of guidance to what's going to be a relatively big project to pull off.
Okay. My second concern, having planned a lot of things, I'm a little concerned, is this the one way that you've got a lot of talent here? Are we going to cherry your...
I think it's a pretty good mix.
Okay.
We thought long and hard about this. Every ward is represented. It's a very diverse group, from age to race to people who... Couple people who were involved in the 175th. I'm sure someone will probably question why I put my brother on, but he ran the city store and the 175th anniversary in 1989, and it was pointed out to me that that was very valuable and that we probably should include him. But there's a good mix here. We have people who represent the hospitals, education, educators, just a whole host of things. Roger Schleter from the News Democrat is a wealth of information, and so I believe we have a very good diverse group.
Okay, and is your intention that this committee will not just go to the end of this this year, but through...
No, this is the committee that... You've got to have continuity now. We've got to get planning, and we got to... So this will be... This is the steering committee. There'll be others be asked to be a part of it. It's not all inclusive, believe me. Okay? We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Folt.
Aye.
Regowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silske.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. Ask for a motion to approve my appointment of Andy Gah and Tracy Ash to story preservation. And did that get into the package, or did you get to you guys by email, et cetera? You got the information. It was a little confusion on Friday. These two members have both volunteered to serve. We have some vacancies. We have a couple more still to fill. This was talked over with the new chairman of the story preservation. She felt very comfortable, and so I bring this, and I ask for a motion. Motion by Alderman Seibert. Second by Alderman Carpenter. Discussion.
And you're still looking for someone?
We've got a couple more to fill, yes. Okay? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Folt.
Aye.
Regowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silske.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. We have the reading of the minutes. Minutes from the regular city council meeting that's held June 4, 2012. What's your pleasure?
John, I'd like to make the motion to approve and file the minutes.
We have a motion, Alderman Heisler, I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Martinson. Any additions or corrections? Alderman, consult.
On page two, under the title Minutes, it mentions that we made a motion to approve the minutes as a ray for city council. I would like to reflect that we actually passed that motion, Chief Adams.
Okay. Okay. Is that accepted by the two of you?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and ask for correction with the amendment to it. Any additions other than that? All in favor of accepting the minutes and having them filed with that change, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Claims to pay for all dispersments. Anybody make a motion to consider? Motion by Alderman Heisler to pay the bills.
I have a motion to make. Play, make, pay, rules and dispersments. So move it here.
We have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Meyer. Do I have a discussion? Roll... Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I didn't have the computer, so I couldn't ask the question. Under Parkland Recreation, there's two different payments to two different umpire associations.
Jim will have to research it. He should have a truncheon. Debbie probably would know that, or Jason, but I don't know what the answer is, other than we have a number of leagues, you know?
I just read the commissioner. One is the elderly, and one is the younger league.
Okay.
Okay. Simple enough.
And there's also almost $6,000 of Bellevue bowling and sports. Is that trophies or something?
A motion, a second to play to pay the claims to pay for all dispersments. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Folt.
Aye.
Regowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Silske.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries. I ask if we could go ahead and send the housing report of cash receipts to date fiscal year 2012-13 and the treasury report, city available funds and statement of cash investments for main housing in one motion for approval.
I salute.
We have a motion by Alderman Concella, second by Alderman Heisler to approve those two reports as filed. Any additions or corrections? All in favor of receiving these reports as is, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion by Alderman, Constella, second by Alderman Heissler to approve those two reports as filed. Any additions or corrections? All in favor of receiving these reports as is, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman, Anderson's not here.
I'll make a motion, Your Honor.
Okay.
As a member of Master Sewer Committee to, I'll be happy to Master Sewer Committee to accept the contract from Siemens Industries Incorporated for order control, basically keeping the plant facility for eight, the cost of $76,000. Make a motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? Are there some discussions? Darby?
I would actually like to make a motion to table, but is that the only thing we'll make for a second? I think it's, you know, it's an unbudgeted amount of money, $76,000, that we don't know that's going to do the trick. The EPA came down and approved Bernie, that price moved over to control for a long time. There's a problem that happens occasionally in the summer, it's not going to happen in the winter. I just said, I'd say we're going to expense, and I think at least at the minimum to table it and ask for it to check on some duties, which I don't think we have the time to do that, because where's it worked at? Because they are not giving any guarantees. This is, you know, flash in the pan, and then you've spent $76,000 on something and quite frankly, I'd like to ask any Alderman here, I've never gotten a call. I've been Alderman for fifteen years, I've never gotten a call on this smelling sewer plant. So I'm kind of questioning the validity of spending that kind of money. So I personally, minimum, like to table it.
Okay, we have, we don't have a second yet. We have, anybody make a motion to table it? We need to get a second on the original motion.
Well, I'll second his original.
Okay, a second to the original motion. We do have, Mr. Hey.
I think, Your Honor, before we discuss table and it, I think we need to have the directed wastewater treatment plan at least explain that this past master sewer, eight-zero finance, seven-one, what has brought this about? And there has been complaints received. I have received complaints and have talked to people that complain. They're mainly in these two gentlemen's ward right now, but they're going to be in my ward in the very near future out at West Haven. I've had people that go to the races on Friday night and talk about, you know, bringing people into the city and instead of the races, it can't stand. Has anybody from the fairgrounds raised concerns to you, ma'am?
Fairgrounds, the, almost the entire board was in my office today and nobody said a thing about orders. Actually, they asked me if we had any recent complaints about their noise, but there was no call, no conversation about orders whatsoever. Let me just say this, and Royce certainly can come up to the microphone if you please. Royce and I had a discussion last, maybe Thursday or Friday, and one of the things that came up were, I think, a couple of things. In recent days, Royce has found out that the state is going to demand us to do what was, I guess is what, unscheduled or unpredicted sludge removal, or they didn't know we were going to have to do immediately.
Well, it's to remove the sludge out of that.
But I mean, we didn't have that budget either.
We had some unbudgeted, but we didn't know exactly how.
Could you go up to the microphone? Anyway, when we had talked in midweek last week, he told me that we were probably faced with a couple hundred thousand dollars now of sludge removal that we didn't have all of it budgeted. I asked him about this motion because we were putting the agenda together, and he did tell me that he does have concerns, that he's not sure he's got all the facts yet, that if this is going to really do the job. When Alderman Meyer talked to me the other day, Friday, I said, yeah, I'm not sure, we're not convinced it's going to definitely fix the problem. Royce has not had time, when he told me the other day, to do much research on this, whether it be contacting other plants or getting with any other distributors of this type of material. So when they asked about potentially tabling it, I've gotten one call to our office, to my knowledge, and that was about thirty days ago. I'm sure Ward Six, where it's still the current Ward Six boundaries, probably has gotten a little bit more. But it is a lot of money when you don't know if it's going to have the results. These people in the business want to sell you something. They would love to sell us $76,000 of the chemicals, but they do say there's no guarantee. Right, Royce?
Well, they won't be guaranteed. I have spoken with another vendor that sells calcium nitrate at a different concentration, so it costs a little bit more to use it, but you may not have to use as much of it. But I haven't been had time to get a proposal from them. We have been visited by the EPA, both the Bureau of Land and the environmental side about these complaints and, you know, they basically understand that wastewater plants have odors and that, you know, use various ways of trying to control those odors and want, you know, I, I mean, we can spend the money if you want to. I can't say it's going to work, I can't say that it won't work, but I'd like a little more time.
Okay. You're saying now, with the recent days, you're saying you would like a little bit more time?
Yeah, this other group, they would sell us the equipment at a fairly good price. This other company, we're just basically renting it. Like I've discussed in the committee meetings, you know, there's a solution to it that we can't get to until we finish that project down there at the plant. It'll be expensive to do, but I think that would be the best route to take. This would be a temporary thing, putting these chemicals in there.
The trade? Yes.
Royce, who recommended this system?
The EPA recommended the bioxide, which is basically the Siemens version of how to use the calcium nitrate. And they did that because they had been to Edwardsville Treatment Plant and that, you know, their process, they had troubles with odors, but it was working there, but it was a different process than what we have at our plant. So they, that's why they don't necessarily think, you know, they can't necessarily guarantee that this will work that year.
I mean...
Their solution to it actually, if you read their letter, is to clean it out and re-engineer it so that you can keep it cleaned out on a regular basis.
Okay. How many times has the EPA been down since this odor has started?
Three times. Two by the environmental side and once by the land.
And is there restrictions as far as how far this smell is allowed to go? I mean, I understand it's, you can go, you're going to have it at a sewer treatment plant, but it seems to be going very far.
There's no, there's no regulatory issues with our permit for odors.
And these three people that came for these inspections, these three different inspections, did they cite us or did this?
No, they didn't cite us. Bureau of Land basically said they understood that you had odor problems and that, you know, burning a little bit of wood to mask the odors was probably a decent way to handle it.
And if we, if we, I mean, how much, we discussed this, Your Honor, it's been quite a while that we initially discussed it. I mean, how much time are we looking at? I mean, I would be willing to make an educated guess, the reason the odors haven't been bad recently is because we've got rain recently, which everybody states that seems to calm it down. But if we go into July and August and September, if we don't get rain and we get dry and we're back to square one, then we missed our opportunity.
There's different types of odors. It's hard to, odors are very difficult to control. Actually, with a long dry period, it actually helps with the odors that we're getting around the yard and the square timeframe. That tank that you're talking about has time to dry out, so the odors are actually less. I mean, right, right after this all happened, you could drive around that basin that we were talking about, you couldn't barely get any odors from it. Basically, what happens, when it rains, it fills back up and then as it, as we pump it back out, as we're mandated to do by the EPA, it wets the material that's on the sides of that basin and then it starts to, you know, the biological process, because it's wet, is where you get those odors. But as soon as that dries out, those bugs die and the odors stop. Other odors that happened because of dry periods were coming from the, mostly from the collection system and escaping through all the catch basins in the city.
Can you tell me, if we do not go this route and we continue to have complaints from citizens, that there's no way that the EPA will come down and potentially cite us?
Not that I don't, no, I don't believe that they can cite us for it because it's not, it's not a part of our permit.
I'm not talking about our permit, I'm just talking about if we're, that there's no way we'd be in violation of any EPA.
I did talk to our representative, regional EPA today, I asked him that, and his answer was that it's not in the permit, that he couldn't cite us for it.
David, I mean, I would be much more concerned if in these three recent visits, they had letters of recommendation or action, but they left none. Right, Royce?
No, they haven't.
No. So I mean, they've said, there's no course of action that they're demanding, recommending. They've been here on three different occasions in the past, what, six weeks?
Yeah, I'd say so.
So...
Well, they did recommend this.
They recommend as consideration. But, but, you know, they also said, I think, in discussion, there's no guarantee that it's going to definitely do the job.
Oh, EPA didn't say that. I mean, the chemical vendor did, but...
The chemical vendor.
EPA didn't say that. They made the suggestion as a way of, well, of handling this.
But it was not a matter of...
They are interested in what we're going to do.
But they were not opposed to the wood either?
No, they weren't.
That brings up another final question. As far as the fire rate of the wood, the next question's raised, to me, in that respect, Your Honor, the city is no burn.
We should, we should...
Do we have to permit from the fire department or what?
Well, and he had talked to the fire department, but I would think if we would continue the burning as a possible solution during those real mad weather days, I would think this council ought to give that permission as the exception because of the fact that it's our treatment plant. We're going through a massive change at that treatment plant.
No, I understand, I just want to, you know, I don't understand.
But I mean, I'm just, if we have another hundred thousand dollars plus that we weren't expecting of sludge removal, and then $76,000 potentially, if we would do all this, all this deodorizing, we could have another $200,000 unexpected sewer cost. And we're trying to analyze now how we keep the sewer bills down, even though we know with this total $88 million project looming over our heads that the state and the federal EPA are mandating, no choice, mandating, we're going to have to raise rates again. So we're trying to hold that, hold the line on that as long as possible to everybody. So I just, and Royce said he'd like to do a little bit more on Friday, he said to me he'd like to potentially do a little bit more investigating. I think if we can take a look at saving or at least prolonging a $76,000 expense, I think it's worth at least another thirty days. Now, there's not been people lying, if, if, you know, if there'd been a line out the door saying that, you know, this is getting worse instead of better, but we've, you've not had any more cases, have you?
No, the visit from the Bureau of Land was after the finance committee. They just, they came last Friday.
I think it was last Friday.
I don't remember when, but it was after the finance committee. And she was investigating an open burning plant and open dumping and several other things that they received.
There was no open dumping.
Yeah, I showed her everything that we're doing down there. She was actually, you know, thought that the idea of the burning to eliminate the smells or at least mask them was not a bad idea, you know? So I know that we have open burning ordinance, so we'd have to deal with that. But she said as long as you were burning site-generated landscape materials and that only, that she would have no problem.
No treated wood.
Yeah, you can't use lumber or, you know, any kind of treated wood, any manufactured wood you can use.
So we originally had a motion and a second to approve the recommendations from the master sewer.
I ask one good question, if you just allow, the sewer committee, I asked the question, and I want to bring up that the construction project that we're under has nothing to do with this problem. This, you've had this smell last year, previous years, past ten years, this is nothing new.
Since I've been there, it's had odor.
A master sewer plant, sometimes, under adverse weather conditions, can have a odor to it on a short term.
It's exactly the opposite of what I understood from the committee. I thought you said this would be a problem because of switching over from aerobic to anaerobic and it would be a...
Well, that was one of the, that's a different odor at the plant. That was aerobic digestion we're using, we've always used anaerobic digestion, which was, you know, the odors didn't get out from that. The anaerobic digestion is temporary and while this project's getting going, when we first started that up, we had more odor than usual because we couldn't pump the solids out of it to our press.
So the bars are going through circumstances, it is a different thing and we have to deal with.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's another odor that we have down there that we didn't have in the past, but that odor is not the one, I don't think that's the one we're dealing with that's causing the odor problem.
I'm really feeling it's not understanding of you, David, about this committee.
Initially, we thought that's what it was, when we had the committee meeting. But after further investigation, we found out that it was coming from the first flush basin, the worst of the portion that was causing the odor complaints.
Okay, and how did you determine that?
By investigating it, by, I guess, the use of our nose, you know, I don't know other way to say it, you know?
Well, then I mentioned the basic literature. If we changed over and then started getting citizens' complaints, and now you're telling me, oh, it wasn't the change over, it's what we've always had?
I don't know if it was just a coincidence or what, you know, I, it, you know, when we started getting the complaints, it was about the same time that we had made that eventual change over, a little bit of time after that, you know, the same time we were getting that rainfall and the first flush basin was filling up and being pumped out. Like I said, it's hard to tell you which odor is causing the issue, you know, it's hard for me to tell you that.
Okay, but I also...
Initially, I honestly thought that's what it was, we all thought that at the plant.
Okay, okay, and that's why we went through this whole thing with the chemicals?
Well, the chemicals was after we decided it was the first flush basin. We can't add those chemicals to our process and, you know, a little bit, a little bit of that, sir.
Okay.
I'm a few blocks away, but I've never had a complaint from a citizen about this. I don't know about Seibert, Martinson, but I did smell it one time just driving by at 159 in South Belton, and asked her about it, and she told me what it was, and it was not there the next time I went by, but it's, every year at certain times, it smells.
Yeah. This is not the news.
I'm frustrated, you know, with the burning as an option. To me, you've just taken one odor and added another odor on top of it. You haven't fixed the problem, you actually, for people who are sensitive to odors, who appreciate the problem. I appreciate that it's cheaper.
But there's nothing saying that the deodorant couldn't be an odor that some people would have a problem with. We don't know, I mean, sometimes deodorize, sometimes some of that stuff could also have an odor.
Well, this chemical isn't a deodorant.
Does that sound over something?
This is, this is, it's a biological reaction with the, with the, with the porcupines and other sulfur-creating organisms in there that, that it reacts to those and stops them from making that.
But I also have a problem with the extreme hypocrisy of the city telling our citizens they can't burn anything, but we're going to...
And I guess that's what you have to make a decision for $76,000 effort, if you want to, with the EPA agreeing and...
Well, at any point, that's already been through two committees and approved.
And Royce is, Royce is telling you, and since then, the EPA, since that committee has been back, right, Royce?
Yes, since, since both committees.
So he's had more visits from the EPA and more discussion, and that's why we're prompting this discussion here tonight. You know, there's been some changes. Mr. Turner?
Two things. I lived in Belleville for fifty-three years, and in July especially, in the summer from time to time, even where I live, which is central Belleville, by West Junior High, there were dealers. My reflection, I intended both the sewer committee and the committee is that those votes were basically because those were the recommendations of Royce and his crew. And as he's analyzing it, he has said many more times, that the solution originally may not be the best one.
That's, that's the choice here tonight. We have a motion, we either go with the original thing. Paul?
Your Honor, a few months in a third here, I'm going to second Alderman Meyer, vote on table.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table. We have one on that first, I guess, right? I'm sorry, we're going to do a roll call on tabling this vote. Yes would be to table this to the next master sewer meeting, okay, Royce?
Point of order, Your Honor. Did Mr. Turner, shouldn't the motion correct to be postponed?
I don't think it makes much difference, the effect's the same.
If you vote to table, you're actually saying you want to, you can bring it back up later in this meeting. That's absolutely the table. Look, I, that's a possibility, but I'm sure that would not happen. You want to make it to postpone, I mean, I'm comfortable with that.
If you want to make it to technically postpone, Mrs. Meyer, are you okay with that? Okay, so we have Mr. Cybert. So we have a motion to postpone-
Till when?
Till the next, it would go back to master sewer, the next committee meeting, when he's all researching now. Since the EPA's revisited and made more discussion, okay? And then subsequently come back to concept.
Take it, another two months' process.
Well, I think the next, the next, the next meeting for the master sewer is the first meeting, first Monday of July, right, Royce?
Yes.
So he's been working on this, but since the last time you all met, a couple things have occurred, as you just heard. EPA's made two more visits, and he's still acquiring some things, so I don't think that's waiting forever. We have a motion to postpone, and we have a second, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt. And Redgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Yeah.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arleth.
Aye.
Ayes have a motion to postpone. Move point. Moving on. This time, we're going on to the next item, Alderman Cybert.
Your Honor, I have two motions to make that were voted on, and if they approve, the committee will object, but have moved on.
Anybody have objection? Proceed.
A motion to approve an annual survey with SCI Engineering, King, and Claude Testing and Engineering. Motion to approve the low therapy insurance sum for asphalt back in amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-five hundred and fifteen cents. So move on.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Alderman Cybert, you're seconding the motion? We have a second by Alderman Schneider to back up the motion by Alderman Cybert. Any questions, additions, or corrections? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Redgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arleth.
Aye.
Motion carries, Alderman Martinson.
Your Honor, I have four motions here that were approved by the finance committee. And if there are no objections, I'd like to vote ahead more.
Alderman Holt wants a separate, so I guess we go down the line, Alderman Martinson.
Okay. Number one, a motion to approve the purchase of four marked police vehicles from Ruthers Ford. An amount of seven, seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. And two unmarked police vehicles from Ruthers Ford. An amount of forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars, including trade-ins. So move on.
Motion by Alderman Martinson, second by Alderman Heisler, discussion. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know why they didn't go before committee before, they didn't go before police and fire?
They went before, they went to finance. Police and fire originally in the budget process agreed to put these cars in the budget when we reviewed the budget. Finance, right, Jamie, review, approve this, opening the bids. So they've been before, they've been before committee.
But when we were at finance committee, the question came up, what are we buying? And Jamie could only answer, all I know is they're Fords.
And, and, and there was a little confusion, but you got the information now, right?
It just says the package, it doesn't say the model of the Ford.
It's, it's, it's the police interceptor, which technically is a Taurus, but they really just call it a police interceptor, right, chief? They no longer make the Crown Vics. The only other choice we had was a Chevy Caprice with four hundred cubic inch engines. And I told the chief, and he wholeheartedly agreed, we weren't going there. We were not gonna go to a four hundred cubic inch engine in this day of the economy. Number one, it's, it's, it's a nightmare to have that many horsepower out there on the street. We tried to slow things down anyway to be reasonable. Two, we wanted to go to these, what they have proven now, tested them for a year. They're a very high-efficiency six-cylinder, which should be better on gas. It's the newest police car that, that the car industry has out there, and it's the Ford Interceptor police package. It is a Taurus frame, or Taurus body. Okay?
I think we're going for finance, we did that with specs, they're in here now. Thank you, Jamie, for putting that.
A little confused, you know, this time of year, there's a little confusion with vacations. You know, Mr. Klinkler had told me he'd gladly have been at that meeting, had he known it. There was a little bit of miscommunication, nobody was trying to keep anything. The very next day, we sent out the, all the specs to everybody, and I think, you know, I heard no other questions. So we have a motion, and we have a second to approve this from Ruthers Ford. For these, and I think, in your bid, you got, Alderman Martinson, you have the four marked and the two unmarked, correct? And the trade-ins are included?
Correct.
We have a motion, we have a second, anything else?
I just wanna know, typically, how many unmarked cars do you need?
What we try to do is have an unmarked for all of the investigators who are on the major case, who respond. Cars, we respond from home, so they don't, they don't come to here and pick up cars. Our investigators, that would be, what is that, we've got about twelve of you guys over there?
And that, uh, uh, twelve, then one DTU, and then one D A.
Well, but some of them are not. We don't need a show package or anything. Some of the cars we have are seizure cars. So it, we don't get a lot of unmarked amounts of a particular number that we try to have. We get them through a number of ways, through federal seizures, state seizures. Some of the cars that they're driving are trucks and those kinds of things. So what we try to do is look at what we need from year to year, based on what you guys let me know comes back.
And then where others go here.
Right, you know, so it can, it can vary. Some, some years, we might have one or two, in some years, we might not have any.
So how long would you anticipate your department can get you out of these?
On the, how long, a unmarked?
Okay. The same person driving it, I think you get more years out of it than several individuals jumping in and out of the car, because everybody drives different, and the wear and tear on the car being totally different, totally different.
I guess I'm a little confused, because I kinda thought you implied that you have a dozen people doing this job, so I was just, I'm always interested, whoever was on call would take the car home. That's not usually how it works?
No, no, no. Here's how, how we work on that. That was how it was before. We used to have two or three cars, and everybody would come in and try to pick up the car if we had a homicide or major case or whatever. They would respond from home, come to the police department, see if what was available, and go out. They also would work to, to a car, those kinds of things, and try to have their cases and so forth. We've worked over a period of time, and that's where Chief Colain was here, and we got some cars, I think, from Metro, right? Pass for us, and we started the process of equipment. All of our investigators would take home cars. We respond immediately to any call, wherever it is, from home. We could put ten or twelve cars on the scene in the night. I mean, we don't have to come here, they have all of their stuff and everything else there. But your question is how long they last. They, they last incredibly long, as far as compared to the mark units, because the mark units are running twenty-four-seven city riding. Which we try to limit the destruction to that and the wear and tear on them by assigning those cars to particular officers. Me and you might share a marked unit. So if that marked unit, if you're off that day, and it's on your shift in the squad, that unit stays marked. So that helps with the wear and tear on those cars. But the unmarked, we can go six, ten years.
Six to ten years. We've had some that gone ten, we've had some that gone eight. Six to ten years, so we're constantly trying to get a couple new ones to rotate the fleet. But every once in a while, we'll get lucky and get a couple unexpected ones from the seizures. So it depends, right? This year, he needed two.
We're most concerned about the mileage on marked units. I mean, it gets up around a hundred thousand miles, and try to get those things rotated in and out. More, another thing we've been doing is trying to keep the best of even the marks that get high mileage, and we use those as spares and field operations and all hands on deck, so we have cars to put off and stand. So we still go along to quite a bit of cars.
We have a motion, we have a second to approve this from Ruthers Ford that we did. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Redgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arleth.
Aye.
Motion carries, we get the cars.
Um, a motion to approve extending a lease agreement with the United States government for the United States Army Reserve Center. Second, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Martinson, second by Alderman Hayden, to approve that lease extension. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Redgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arleth.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, I motion to approve the city paying the lighting expenses for Turp Creek subdivision. So move on.
Second. Motion by Alderman Martinson, second by Alderman Hart. Discussion. Yes, ma'am.
That is a private street, and it has its own parcel number. And when those gates are closed, it'll be just like a private driveway. Can the city really take on that when we have other people that have lights that they're paying for in their yards that shine on public streets and public alleyways, but yet they're paying? Are we gonna get a, or we're gonna start having to pay for everybody's lights? It wouldn't be no more than fair.
I think these folks, you know, have a very slow process of working through this. There was a lot of things that happened with the subdivision that were out of these individuals' control. There were some things with the developer that were very unique, to say the least. I, I hear what you're saying. I do believe there's another subdivision developing here in town that's probably gonna be approaching us for a similar type consideration, and I think we'll have to answer that one on its own merit. But I do think that, based on what these folks have gone through, there's not a large number of lights. It is city streets, they do-
It's not city, they're-
No, it is, it is in the city, excuse me, and city services are responsible. Our, our police and fire, when they go down there, certainly need the lights, you know.
But it's gated.
I understand that. I'm saying, I'm not telling you it's not unique. This went through a long process in committee. You certainly can vote against it, but the motion here tonight is to approve it, and, and, you know, I will tell you, if it's a tie vote, I, after much deliberation and thought, even though I understand what your questions are, I would probably vote for it, so, so-
But their association fees should pay.
Their, their lighting fees and what they've gone through for a lot of different reasons, and the way this was set up, misrepresented, and they had paid some, they proved to us some very large amounts of money over the years. And, and I think what they're asking us to do now is to just accept the cost of the, the lights.
But then it shouldn't be gated. It should be a public, where people can get in and out, anybody, we're paying for the lights.
I've had, I've had nobody that didn't tell me they couldn't get back to the visit.
It's not a visit. If I wanna drive down that street, I won't be able to drive down the street at night. It's gated, you can't get in, it has its own parcel number. I went to the store, I was in God.
Okay, here-
We have other people in my, I have people in my neighborhood that are paying for their street lights, for the yard lights.
Yard lights, yes.
But it shines on public streets.
Okay, I, I, you're, I, I know you're concerned.
Then we're gonna have to say yes to everybody else that comes to the park.
I think you have to take everything on case by case. If you were at somebody's meeting, if you'd listened, they had some very unique circumstances going back to the building we developed and was disrupted. And because of those reasons, I, I tend to agree what they're, what they got here before us tonight. So we have a motion, we have a second to approve this. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Redgewitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arleth.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Moving on, Alderman Martinson.
Your Honor, I motion to approve the new credit card program, credit accounts payable. So move on. Motion.
Motion by Alderman Martinson, second, who's the second, Alderman Martinson?
If I could comment here, David, I looked at that agreement probably a little over a week ago and made some comments. Those comments were incorporated in the amended agreement that was sent to me on Friday, which, except for one, and I have sent to Jamie another letter requesting that it be modified, just to reflect the one other concern that I have. I do not anticipate that there will be any problems. I would suggest that, under those circumstances, the motion be amended to approve the new credit cards program, subject to approval by the city attorney contract.
Do you accept that, Mr. Martinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Meyer?
Absolutely.
Okay, now from there, very good, right here, noted. Is there any other discussion on this program?
I'm sorry, I was not able to attend the finance live, but maybe you could just explain how it works.
Jamie, you wanna step up and explain? What is this, about two months ago, when we started first driving, Mr. Schreik came, and I put you, put you in the kitchen.
Essentially, what this is, it's kinda like a virtual credit card program to pay our bills. We're not doing anything much different than what we do now, but instead of the account payable for writing physical checks to pay some of our bills, it'll be paid online through a virtual credit card. There's no fees for this program. The credit card company will come through all the training with my staff, to work with our IT department, as well as our computer software vendors, to make sure that the system's all compatible, there are no yearly fees, we don't need special setup fees. Essentially, any of our vendors that accept MasterCard now, they determine payment from regular customers, most would be willing, the, the credit card company helps us contact them to sign up for this program to accept payments from us through a credit card. But most of them, since they accept MasterCard, they can't really deny the cities paying by MasterCard.
Okay, and what you could say, thirty-eight percent of your vendors match?
What we did when they first came to us and introduced the program, I gave them a file of the last fiscal year, the actual expenditures we made through all the vendors. They know that list based on who accepts MasterCard, has worked with programs through other cities or other of their clients, and thirty-eight percent of them came back, they showed positive, and based on the expenses that we actually had last year, and the rebate percent, which is essentially like you would have the credit card at home, you might have cash rebates, that we earn back for using this program, it would amount to anywhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand that would come back to the city.
So that would be the savings. We had another proposal a while back, but this was greater than the other one.
Yes, the other one was kind of a tiered system, based on how much it was used, you got more or less of a rebate. But after they analyzed our accounts, it was like point one percent, and about ten thousand would get back a year.
Okay, so you are paying the power bill, and it's a hundred dollars. Generally, there's about four percent that somebody is charged. Usually, the power company is paying it for giving your customers convenience, taking the credit card.
Any vendor that accepts a credit card has agreed to the credit card terms, that they will get the fees to get there on a faster. So it's the same as they would, if you went into that same store and paid your bill, use your MasterCard, it's the city with.
So we're looking at this as, we investigated it, from the first time the man came to me, and I went with him, then I put him on to the end of the return, et cetera. Savings potentially of a minimum of a hundred thousand, potentially up to two hundred.
It fluctuates based on how it's actually, how much it's actually used. So they can't guarantee that, oh, you're gonna get two hundred thousand back. It's totally based on how much you use it, but based on what we did last year, considering what spenders pay typically the same year to year for us, we could make anywhere, and percentage rate's about one point seven percent on average that we earn back.
Okay, and so of this roughly thirty-eight percent that take them, what, what kind of entities? Are we talking about local people, are we talking about the utilities?
Any of our vendors that accept MasterCard, I mean, we might buy from Auguste Bo and Hugo and Auguste Bo, which were massive cars, so basically, we have to contact each of the vendors, and the credit card company is annoying about, like, to get them to sign up and approve that, yes, we'll accept MasterCard.
Just like setting it up for your personal evil.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion, I'm sorry, I should, motion and a second. I'm sorry, I just wanted, with my understanding, Jamie, we're not issuing any credit cards.
Correct, that's correct. It's essentially a virtual credit card.
To her office. Her, she's on it.
On the computer that can be used to, to pay these bills and the money that ACH out of our account into this kind of clearing account, so paying with credit card.
I just wanted to clarify, I mean, I do know they have city credit cards in some department heads and businesses have used them, but I wanted to make clear that in other contexts, we discussed it, but it's not like we're pitching out a bunch of credit cards. We go to you.
I don't want to worry you.
It's essentially just a system. Does he do now paying our bills, but instead of paying them by check? Or a lot of them would be paid by credit card.
Right, but the thing you're probably have one with much larger, so do you anticipate this causing you any cash flow problems? Because instead of paying twenty little bills, you're paying one bigger?
No, it'll still be on the same timeframe as the claim cycle. Each Monday night, when I approve here, we mail the checks out Tuesday morning. The same thing, the ACH would be issued Tuesday morning, so just we have to pay the bills anyway, that same amount of money's going out.
So you don't remember, you just pay anything carrying over? So that you're accruing charges or interest on the credit card?
No, because when the bill comes due, when we're paying it by check, then this credit card, the money's gone from us.
Right.
And the credit card company, so sometimes it can take a little bit of time to get it to clear the credit card. The vendor, if they're messing around and not getting it to clear, it might sit in this clearing account that we have at the bank at the bank for a little while, as was any check that for me is outstanding, but essentially, they all turn over from the line.
Bottom line is, whatever money the city would give is more than we're giving back. That's bottom.
We're essentially doing pretty much the same.
So we're continuing to watch out how the city will make more of our money. We have a motion, we have a second, with the understanding that city attorney will have the final review of the contract to make sure that everything's in his final okey-dokey. With that said, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul. Reguets.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harlow.
Motion carries. We have a motion to approve a banner permit for the, I and I Schreiners to display the banner for the 2013 Shrine Circus at the North Illinois Street location to the city. Motion by Alderman, second by Alderman Meyer. Any discussion on this request?
Is this, on the outside, before you come in here every same time, this is strictly?
This is just for the banner, Mr. Martinson feels. They always do it right after the previous one, they ask to get the banner approved quickly. We have a motion, a second to approve this request. All in favor of this request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, motion carries. Next page, page three. Request for solicitor's license from the following individuals. What, what's their first?
Those that listed there.
Yeah, those that listed there. Krista Janzorga, what's the next name, do you worry? Maya Zarnia. It's the Southwestern Company Educational Books and Software. Then we have James N. Lewis and Shelley Lewis, Aspen Contracting. I'm asking, I'm recommending that you withdraw the name of James G. Biedtor, B-I-E-T-O-R. In my opinion, his background check does not meet our standards, so I would ask that we would not include his name. The next name included is Milton R. Downey, Philip T. Hogan, Thomas Construction, and Mark P. Inman, Rebel Inc. Do I hear a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman, where'd you wish, do I hear a second?
And this is the only thing that one of you.
This is eliminating the one that I just said.
Yeah, absolutely.
You'll second the motion. So we have a motion to approve those solicitors with the understanding that we are not approving James G. B-I-E-T-O-R. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion to approve holding a public hearing, July 10, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. regarding the State of Illinois Video Gaming Act. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Martinson. Do I have a discussion? Yes.
On this solicitor's license, I sent an email to Captain Sachs, please, Chief.
Are we, are we on the, are we on?
Oh, okay, okay, I still sent one on the game. If this, can we talk about this, or is it just?
This is just to hold a public hearing. This is the very first step. We're not making, taking no action, making no decisions. We're just agreeing, I thought I'd bring it to you all to agree to hold a public hearing, and the date and time that Mrs. Fields and I selected. Here's the date and time approved, July 10, 2012, 7:00 p.m. in this room, for the sole purpose of discussing gaming for the video, State of Illinois Video Gaming Act. Do we have a motion and we have a second? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Reguets.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harlow.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I ask for a motion to approve holding a public hearing on July 12, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. in this room regarding crime-free multi-housing proposed arguments. We have a motion by Alderman Hayden, who's the second? Alderman Cybert. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Reguets.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harlow.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Turner.
I suggest that we do this as a group. Any objection? Hearing none. Number eight, communication denied. Move, request permission to block off the south side of our building on Red Flash Avenue from the alley to the penthouse, and also requesting six barricades for their eighth annual party on June 30, 2012, from 9:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. Communication from the League Lounge, requesting permission to close North 15th Street from West Main Street down to the alley behind the League Lounge, including necessary barricades for a benefit poker run for the Marlin family on June 30, 2012, from 11:00 a.m. until 1:30 p.m. Communication from Belle East Hockey Club, requesting permission to hold a 5K run and a half-mile fun run on Thanksgiving morning, beginning at 8:00 a.m. to block and to block off Main Street from the square to 16th Street, and request only one policeman for assistance. Communication from Relay for Life in Belleville, requesting the opportunity to paint Belleville purple by tying ribbons to the light posts and staking signs around town starting July 8, and to be taken down from labor in July 22, 2012. And communication from Belleville Main Street, requesting to extend Music for the Name to September 2012, to including the following additional dates: Thursday, July 26; Thursday, August 23; Thursday, September 27; and to close North 10th Street from East Main to the alley from 5:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. on those dates.
Do I hear a motion for those, Redman?
Second.
Motion by Alderman, second by Alderman Heisler. Do I hear a discussion?
A question about the League Lounge, and is that enough, or do you have a brief comment?
We've done, everybody's done, do we have much time to add? Never had a problem.
And is the, are people the same group that requested to do something on Thanksgiving morning this year? Of this test?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, my direct question is, the 5K run on Thanksgiving morning also a walk?
Yes.
Just for us old walkers, I'd like, you would be welcome. Okay, we have motion, a second to approve those A through E requests. Any discussion further? All in favor of the motion to approve these requests signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's go to the next page.
Your Honor, I, we set up a public hearing on the night of the ordinance.
Well, aren't this meeting, you're gonna get a notice, we have to wait to see if this was approved tonight. Our this meeting is gonna be rescheduled for Tuesday, July 17, at their regular time, 6:00 p.m. in this chambers. So you get a notice and literally will give a tougher notification in advance of that change of meeting, but there was just no sense in having the ordinance meeting before these two public hearings. Because that's the two biggest things.
Yeah, I realize it was the same night.
Yeah, so we, we listened to the comments that we didn't want to join them, and we did it separately, and we'll do that on the 17th. There's no petitions this evening, resolutions I have a request to read by title only, Resolution 3106 and 3107. Motion by Concella, second by Alderman Heisler. Is it okay to read them also as a group? All in favor of reading those two title, those resolutions? Yes.
Aye. 3107, doesn't that reflect the $76,000 that the, the order would cost for the sword? I think that's what it was, part of it.
So we want to take, I'm sorry.
It came as a motion out of finance to, if that other got approved, to prove.
Okay, I apologize. You know, you told me that last week, you told me that Friday, we talked about this. So I ask for a motion only to read Resolution 3106 by title only. We have a motion, and we have a second. Yes, sir.
Your Honor, just quickly, the part of record, I know Resolution 3106 involves the Southside Park and the Haslem Green. Can you just give a quick summary of what this Haslem Green is gonna do for the city?
Jim, can you speak up?
Real quick, Southside Park, you know that park, it's the third time we've liked this grant. It gives me a tweak of a time, about too much infrastructure, so they wouldn't pay for that. So it involves overhanging softball fields, it involves new playground area, it involves making the lake pond more accessible, which will include a fishing pier for disabled folks. One of the things we've noticed at that park that's shifted in the last couple of years is more disabled people, use a lot of wheelchairs, because they use the trail to get there, come to that park, so it'll probably be kind of our accessible park. So our playground area will be kind of accessible stuff, and there will be a trip, when the trail comes, it'll loop around, we get this grant to loop around the lake, so that cyclists have a turnaround point, but also wheelchairs have more accessibility, so like, that's, that's just.
Excellent, thank you.
Resolution number 3106, a resolution on authorization for the city of Belleville's application to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for 2,000 kilometer open space land acquisition and development grant files.
Motion to approve Resolution 3106. Motion by Alderman, second by Alderman Heisler to approve that resolution. Yes, ma'am.
I'm still a little bit muddy. I appreciate what you just said, but is, is that, are we applying for the grant? Or we have received the grant, and this is how we're using it?
We're applying.
We're applying, but you have to be very specific what you would use it for. Give an outline what you're using it for.
Okay, and do we have an estimated cost on what we're asking?
The grant, not entirely, because we're not that processed, but it has to be less, the grant itself has to be less than $400,000. And so, it looks like we're gonna be in the neighborhood of about $370-ish.
Okay, and that's making the trail and the dog?
Yes, and a few other things as well.
Okay, so assuming we would get the grant, then you would come back and we would bid it out, is, is that the process?
Absolutely, and there's no doubt a match to it. We'd have to do that, consider that, and then next year, no budget with the tip, I'm sure the tip dollars will be have to use. Which we've done in the past with other trails, so I'm just, I'm just repeating what we've done. We have a motion, we have a second to approve Resolution 3106. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Reguets.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harlow.
Motion carries. I guess officially, I ask for a motion to postpone Resolution 3107. Motion by Alderman, second by Alderman Heisler. Any further discussion to postpone? All in favor of postponement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ardent, I ask for a motion to read by title only, Ardent's number 7610. Motion by Alderman, second by Alderman Heisler to read Ardent's by title only, 7610. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Renouncing Article 3, Power Code of Chapter 5, Department of the Revised Code of Order for Belleville, Illinois, by adding Section 5.32 there.
Motion to approve Ardent's number 7610. Motion by Alderman, second by Alderman Heisler to approve Ardent's number 7610. Discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Is this the part of the appendix?
This is, this is.
Point of Board of Review?
No, Chief, this, this is the part that refers to the appendix, right?
Yeah, it adopts the, the appendix A that was in there, for the qualifications for the board.
So the next meeting will bring the names forward to the, his recommendations for the board.
If I could clarify for that, when the, when the international Power Code was adopted, it adopted a portion of the code that created the Board of Appeal. It did not include, however, appendix A. Appendix A sets forth the qualifications for the members of the Board, as well as the procedure that the Board will follow in the conduct of this meeting.
We have a motion, a second to approve Ardent's 7610. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Reguets.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Harlow.
Motion carries. Unfinished business, we have a request for a solicitor's license from the following employees from Aspen Contracting, Bryce A. Dawson, Drew C. Barry, Corey E. Nielsen, Michael J. Gianola, and Sean M. Rodriguez. What's your pleasure?
I believe we approve these.
Motion by Alderman Concella, do I have a second? Second by Alderman Meyer. Discussion, Alderman Elmore.
Legal question, the bonds are all marked City of Belleview, Illinois, for Belleview, Illinois, on every bond. Does that present a problem?
I haven't looked at the bonds, because you don't be City of Belleville.
Okay, they are not.
We'll have to note that and make sure they correct them. Other than that, is there any other discussion?
I have a question. Would we approve the solicitor's license and then, is there any way we can get any information about the company that they're?
Mr. Roquita is doing a very intense job, I guess, the Secretary of Fields, investigating these companies. We've found a few of them to be, I don't know if I want to use the word fraudulent, but just not, a little bit shy of being wholesome. And we've had, found some problems with some of their reputations. Jim Roquita has done an excellent job to keep those away from us, and we have turned them away.
So we don't even see it?
You don't even see it, we just turned away, Mike just sent a letter off to a batch of another ones that we've had problems in the past. They refiled under another name, Mr. Roquita caught it, and the city attorney sent a letter off after confirming, the chief and myself, and we, we just denied it, and they, they got away.
My next question is, I did get the information, I asked from the Department today, how many solicitors have been out? And there's been nine of them from 6:549, oh, not, that's the time, never mind, just now, let me get it. 510 of 12 is the date, and 2615 of 12. Now, not everybody's gonna call it in with solicitors, but could these be some of the people that's been out? Because it doesn't say the company's name or who they are.
It doesn't necessarily mean that.
This is what I meant.
It could just be a call, that's a cab, so that could just be how the call was put into the cab system. That could be any number of things. That could be people that don't come through the city at all, and they just help soliciting, and then people call and they complain about it. And we, it doesn't necessarily mean that that's any of the.
Ones that we've got.
That's correct.
Okay, if we would find it, would be them. Is there any?
If they're licensed and if they're not violating.
No, 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 let's say, let's say this first one would have been one of them that was out before we approved their license. Do we do anything about it?
If, if in fact, we have that information, if that's captured there, a lot of times, I'd have to tell you that we may have contacted them. So that could be a call just after the fact, somebody calls. A lot of time that we have, is people come home, they talk about it, and say, well, let's call, let the police know that some people was here, and they, and they thought that they were trying to get, or, you know, use fraud or something against somebody. So we don't always make contact. So when you look at that piece of paper, if, but if we do come into contact with somebody that's violating our law, our ordinance here, our board is here, we'll go ahead and address that. I don't know if we'll make a connection if they haven't applied here. But if they do, such as with that alarm company that we had, we had those people were out and about before they ever, uh,
Well, that's what I meant.
We called them and we just knocked them down. You will never see that. We'll stop that during the process.
We just need to make sure that people in the beginning, neighborhoods who get feedback where people are pushy, taking advantage of the elderly, we need, the police need to hear this. These are the things, but soliciting, as Mr. Flynn will tell you, same thing Mr. Strick told us over the years, they have a right. The process is here, they gotta get background checked, and they have a right to, to be out there, door to door, unless somebody has posted that they don't want solicitors at their door, right? But, but it's their, it's America. They have a right to do that. But, but we are trying to remind people, if they're extremely pushy, some of them, unfortunately, we suspect they might be, Casey Jones, although it might be preying on the elderly. Those are the calls, the police need to hear about, so they can. Alderman, President?
Oh, Mayor, this is brought up in a, I'm not sure what committee, but there, we were talking about this, maybe it's the last city council meeting. Talking about passing the ordinance, so we could have a no solicitors list for, so when people are coming to get their approval from the council, they could get a list of residents in the city that don't want to be solicited. I don't know how legal that is.
Just, I think we talked about that, Alderman Hayes brought it up, I think, was there some talk that we had that it'd be very cumbersome to administer? Isn't that, you know, it's like a no-call list for your cell phones. We, we don't, as of right now, we don't have the, I don't know if you want to call the technology hookup or even the staff to, if somebody calls in, you know, it would be great to say, okay, I called in, signed a list, I don't want anybody knocking at my door, but that doesn't mean the city can prevent that. You know, I, I just, and I don't think we want to give false hope that we can prevent that, because that could be, that could be a department of its own.
Our ordinances do allow a resident to post on their door, front door, that they do not want any solicitation, or any solicitors knocking on their door. Anybody who did, you know, proceed to knock on the door
at it, but immediately, there's no quick answer to this. We have a motion and a second to approve these, under unfinished business, this solicitor's request, I, that were read, will you have a second? Motion second, I just.
With the correction that I called them, and then the bond changed to City of.
Right, right, to make sure that the bond reflects.
Yeah, Mr. Concella.
So with that correction, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.